We call to order the Williamsport City Council meeting of October 12th, 2017. Please rise for the invitation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord God, as we come together tonight, we ask that you guide us while we represent all members of our city wisely and fairly, that we recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, that we respect and never forget where we came from, but are willing to listen and accept positive changes. Lord, we do thank you for all that you have blessed us with, and we humbly ask you for your continued love and blessings to give us the strength and guidance for the decisions we make in all that we do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz, and also to the flags for standing. That was an exciting pre-part of the meeting. Next item on the agenda then is approval of city council meeting minutes dated September 28th, 2017. I have a motion and a second to approve these minutes.
We'll move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, great to have you back.
Thank you. Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, so we can move on to the next item, which is a public hearing for conditional use. Good evening, Mr. Nar.
Good evening, President Williamson, members of council.
Let me declare the public hearing open.
What we have before you tonight is Berryack is looking to locate multifamily units at the corner of Railway and East Third Street. It is within the CC zoning district. In accordance to the zoning ordinance, it requires a conditional use public hearing. We did advertise to the local paper, paper as well as to the local residents, and at this time, we can answer any questions.
Thank you. And are there, is there a presentation of, within the hearing, or are we just simply asking for public comment at this point?
Public comments.
Thank you. And so, as part of the public hearing, then, we will provide an opportunity for both groups favoring approval of the conditional use, and then, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to their request for conditional use. And so, let me ask first for those who would like to speak in favor of the conditional Given plenty of opportunity, then, let me ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the conditional use. Hearing none. Anything for the add on the conditional use here?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to close the conditional use?
We'll move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second, Mrs. Frank, on closing the conditional use, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the conditional use hearing is now closed. We'll go ahead and move on down to item number 13 on the conditional use itself. Mr. Nar.
Yes. What I present to you is a conditional use request by Berryack located at the corner of Railway and East Third Street. The current land use consists of three separate parcels. Two of the parcel has vacant buildings on them, and the third is actually a small vacant lot. It is located within the CS zoning district. The proposed plan would be to combine all three parcels as one, combine the two structures as one structure for multifamily dwellings, and construct a parking lot. In accordance with Article 1333.05, multifamily dwelling does require a conditional use. The applicant has provided a copy of the seven criteria necessary to be addressed. Providing conditional use approved is granted by council. Mr. Eck will basically come before you. Next item on the agenda is to consolidate all three of those parcels as one for multifamily within that unit. It was reviewed by the planning commission with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this conditional use?
We'll move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions? Mr. Noviello.
The sketch we have of the house, like, is that going to be part of the add-on? Is that what we're talking about here?
That will be, actually, what you're looking at is really, there's two houses there. Basically, when he combines that, that will be the image that you see on Third Street.
Okay, and it's only going to be that one single door entrance there?
Yes.
Yeah, the open line, you have two birch yaps, you have one on the back.
Other comments or questions? Let me ask a few, then. The, and you mentioned some of this, but I'm just going back over it. The current zoning of that area is?
CS.
CS. And what is the, what is allowed residentially under CS without conditional use?
A single-family, single-family dwellings.
Okay. And so, the conditional use, we can add conditions to it, of course.
Correct. As a conditional use, you can set requirements.
And, but that's specific under CS that any multifamily dwelling would require conditional use, approval by council.
Correct. What it's designed to do is to say, it is a permitted use in that area, but council has the ability, or the administration has the ability, to set certain requirements or standards as far as what they want. In other words, limit the size of the units, that type of thing, how many units they can have, things of that nature.
Okay. And so, in terms of that, then, could you, you know, of course, there's some information in terms of the application for a conditional use that explains compatibility, purpose, suitability, et cetera. If we approve it without conditions, is he bound by the statements that are in here?
Correct. That is his application. He's bound by the application that he's presenting before you this evening.
So, for example, cultured stone facade, or striking decorative door, just to pick a couple of things that I found quickly, those are things he would be required to have, and he would have to re-apply to council if he were going to change.
He actually would not, that's what he's requesting. Again, it's not within the central business district where we have a design, so these are things that he's looking at doing, requesting to do, but it's not a requirement under the building codes or the design standards, because it does not fall within the central business district. In the CS, anybody can basically, you know, create a structure, or paint a structure a certain way. This is just something that he feels would enhance the image for that area.
And, I mean, that's important to know, because he can, and I'm not saying he would, anyone could make an argument for why something is, in this case, applicable, but then not follow up on actually what they are, is, in essence, promising that would make it applicable.
Correct.
Okay. And so, we need to take that into account in terms of any conditions that we might put on it. Now, the other set of questions that I have are really about the structure itself. What will remain of the existing structures, and what will be new that would help to combine them?
Basically, what he's going to do is that the facade, and actually, Mr. Eck could probably answer a little bit more than I can, as far as how it's done. I know he submitted drawings, and he spoke with Mr. Girardi, our code administrator. It has a proper egress in and out of the building. It will be a total of six units that are in there.
How many square feet are each unit? And is he requi, I mean?
He's required, under multifamily, he's required to have 600 square feet of habit of living space. That's basically the set standard for multifamily.
Okay. And, but we could put additional conditions, as you said, in terms of the number of, the number of units and the space.
Within reason. Council has the ability within reason.
Sure. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we need to know to be able to make a decision about any conditions that we'd apply. Would, and I'm not proposing anything, I really am trying to make sure I understand. So, to go back to the cultured stone idea, is it, could it be a condition that he use the materials that he lists?
I don't think that we can force him to do that, again, because we don't have a specific design standard.
I think aesthetics, you cannot regulate. I could be wrong. Mr. Norman may be correct. But unless there's something, covenants are in the deed, unless you have restriction in a certain area, you cannot regulate aesthetics. So, if he wants to put up barn board left and right on, he probably can, and I don't think conditionally you can tell him he can't.
Okay. But we should take-
But that's more of the attorney's.
And I'm not trying to, I just want to know what I should ignore, basically, in anybody's argument about what makes it a good project. And if he's, in one of the places he's making the case that it's a good project, because it will look nice using materials that sound like they will look nice, but then, he could walk out the door and buy other materials, then I should ignore what materials he said he's using, because he's not bound to them.
If, if I can, just interrupt. Basically, what right now is you do, even though they haven't been used for years, and that's one of the reasons you go through the conditional use and so forth, they were previously multifamilies. So, he's really putting back in what was there. Okay? But he hasn't used them for so long, he loses his rights to that use.
Sure.
Okay? So, again, you're really approving a condition, basically, for six multi, six multifamily units in a building, is what you're looking for your approval. The way it looks and the aesthetics really is not the approval portion here.
Okay. But that was part of his argument, and so, it's good to know what I should, basically, ignore, and which ones I should not. How many units were in those two structures previously when they were used as multifamilies?
There was three units in each one.
So, how much additional square footage is being added by joining the two units? Two, two structures?
Probably like 10 by 40. 10 by 40, 10 Y.
Just the stairwell.
Right. So, it's like 10 by 40.
About 10 by 30.
10 by 30.
Basically, the width, between, the space between the two buildings and the depth of the buildings.
That'll go on both sides.
What he's doing is, he's creating a fire corridor in the center of the building, combining them, and that's where his emergency egress is, two exits out both sides, this going into this, and that's what he's really doing, infilling the buildings.
Okay. And you said the parking, once it's consolidated, it'll meet parking requirements?
He would, he would have to come back as far as through the zoning. It does not come back through planning, because it's less than 50 percent. It would not require land development, but he would be required to meet both stormwater as well as zoning requirements, and at that point, it would be reviewed by-
So, we don't need to put conditions on for stormwater or parking?
No, he would be required to meet the zoning ordinance as well.
Okay. I'm trying to think of other areas where we've touched upon the idea of conditions over the years, to just make sure I run through all the possibilities in my mind.
A lot, and some of those conditions may be, again, like the number of units, you got to take into consideration the area, the traffic, that type of thing, where you could limit that. The other thing, too, as far as the conditions, you could put like timeframes, when the project has to start, when it has to be finished, completed, such forth, so it doesn't stick out there. Because once you approve a conditional use, they could, you know, I mean, no one, it's forever, I mean, they have, there's no expiration as far as when they have to start or finish.
Has he indicated what he sees as a reasonable time for completing the project?
He's already doing some minor modifications that have nothing to do with the conditional use as far as the structure, but I believe he's trying to get it done as quickly as possible to get it utilized.
And it would have to be finished to be occupiable, right?
Correct.
And receive an occup-
Basically, what would happen is, is if council approves it, sets the conditions, at that point, we submit him a letter, he would come in and apply for the building permits to move forward with that. It would be reviewed, both zoning, through the city engineer, as far as stormwater and stuff of that nature. Then, during the process, it would be inspected by the codes department. Once it's completed, at that point, a final inspection would be issued, or be completed, and then a certificate of occupancy to occupy the facility and begin utilizing it.
And, Mr. Eck, do you have, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure that it's consistent with all our conditional uses. Do you have a timeframe in mind?
This could be our whole year, five years, we'll do it all there.
When do you hope to have it occupied?
I'm thinking two, three years.
Would it be reasonable to you, by the way, what's the consequence if he does not meet a timeframe that we would put on as a condition?
The conditional use would basically null and void.
Would it be reasonable to you if we put a condition on that said by the end of 2018, it needed to be complete?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, obviously, I'm trying to be reasonable, but trying to be consistent as well. And so, I'd make a motion to add the condition that conditional use, that the project must receive occupation, occupancy-
Certificate of occupancy by 2018.
Eligible to receive certificate of occupancy by December 31st, 2018. That's my motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions on that motion? Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, thank you. You were going through a list of things that have been done in the past, parking, or occupancy was one.
Timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, timeframe was one.
They're, a lot of times, they're the main two, as far as the conditional use, as far as standards that are set. Again, like I said, we can't go back to say what the building's going to consist of. It would have to meet all the codes, it would have to meet all the zoning. Again, like I said, the parking lot would have to go through that process.
It, part of what I read, by the way, in this, again, not the specific materials, but the idea is, we'll go from it looking like two structures, and I think your intention is to make it look as one structure. I don't know what that would mean in terms of a condition. It doesn't sound like a condition, but is there any codes, or requirements, that if they're joining two structures? I mean, I know that's happened throughout the city, like, I mean, college did that, you know, over hundreds of years with the old main building that was finally demolished in the 60s. But sometimes it's done well, and sometimes it looks like two structures that really shouldn't be one.
And what happens with this, they are two separate lots, so basically, him looking at combining that, under the zoning, you can't develop over a lot line, so that's one of the reasons.
Yeah.
Once it's completed, once the conditional use is granted, the next item is going to be the lot consolidation, so he has to consolidate all of those three parcels-
Right.
-to utilize that and cross over lot lines.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I just, you know, sometimes around town, you see Frankensteins, where you want to take what was two buildings, somebody had an idea that they could be turned into one, but they really detract from the value of the properties around them, because that was not executed well. And I don't, this looks like it will be executed well, but there's nothing in the place, there's no way for us to ensure that, right? It wouldn't be our role.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all my questions, so thanks for your patience in answering them. Do I hear any other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Yeah, just a handful to follow up on that. In terms of maybe sort of safety concerns with restructuring the lots together, right now, we're showing an egress on Railway Street from the proposed parking area for the two structures. That cannot change, correct?
Correct.
I mean, clearly, it would be detrimental for there to be an egress on Third Street.
No, we wouldn't. Again, it was already reviewed and spoken with Rebecca, and myself, and Mr. Girardi, and Mr. Eck, and that's something that would not be permitted at all.
Okay. Got it. The same, since I know it won't come back before council, we have landscaping requirements in terms of rebuilding parking lots, and obviously, stormwater review, right? Will stormwater review take care of the landscaping requirements?
The ordinance itself, parking lot requirements, would actually take care of the landscaping, yes.
So, those will be met when we look at zoning?
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. And then, lighting?
It would be the same thing. It would fall under zoning, there's a certain glare that's required, permitted, based on parking, depending on where it's located, so it would be required under the zoning orders to meet that as well.
Okay. So, I'm just trying to make sure that these aren't other things that we should be setting as conditions. They're all going to be taken care of at some point. And then, the only final thing would be, I know that that corridor can be popular for signage, small dole boards and whatnot. Is there any, I'm assuming there are zoning restrictions on utilizing the structure to-
In the CS zoning district, again, like I said, they would have to follow the zoning ordinance under 1346, which is our sign ordinance.
Okay. And those are, and obviously, there wouldn't be any restrictions we could put on with conditional use that would change that at all, or?
No. And the other thing, too, is, it is along the Penn State beautification, I mean, not Penn State, but the PennDOT Highway, so therefore, anything that would actually, if they were elected to try to do something like that, it would actually have to be reviewed by PennDOT, because it's within 1,000 feet of a PennDOT Highway.
Okay. So, it goes through a PennDOT approval, through our approval, but conditional use can't affect that particular element either. Just in your opinion, as zoning officer, I know that one of the, one of the conditional use criteria is health, safety, and welfare. And I just want to be sure that, are there any sort of conditional use, any sort of conditions that we should be placing on this development in terms of health, safety, and welfare, or anything like that, that won't be taken care of as part of the zoning process?
It would all be taken care of during the zoning process, the sidewalks, and I do know, like I said, egress in and out. He is also looking, like I said, because of the line of trees that are along there, he is looking at taking them out as well. That's something that he's going to agree to do. And again, it would fall under, if the trees become a safety issue, that at that point, basically, the city arborist would take a look at it and determine that they would be required to be taken down. And again, like I said, that's along-
Line of trees where? Excuse me, sorry.
On the east side of the, if the east, on the east side of the second building.
Okay. Understood. So, along the lot line between the Susscon Lot and Mr. X, one of Mr. X's parcels currently, there's a line of trees, and so, the consideration would be if that were a health, safety, and welfare concern. It does seem like that would be helping him to meet any landscaping requirements we would have, though. Just trying to, personally, because I always think trees are a wise idea, but just trying to make sure that we, this is such, I guess, because it faces the highway, because it is so much a part of what people see, whether or not they're coming into our city, it may well be a part of what makes them decide to come into our city or not into our city. I feel as though it's kind of a crucial lot. It's a small, it's a small project, it's a, it's a small adjustment, perhaps, to two parcels there, but I think the reason that there's, that we're more concerned about this than we usually would be, is the impact, the visual impact that it can have for both visitors and those driving by, and that it will have for people's general impression of our community. So, it's not, it's, the concern is a little larger than the actual project, but that's why I'm asking all these things. But, you know, as long as we feel as though zoning will address the remaining concerns on the parcel, then, it sounds good to me. I'll yield to somebody else.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Charles?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Eck for the narrative. It's well thought out and well-written, understandable, and I appreciate the points that you've made, but the vision that you've expressed to, it's compatible with our vision for the city, you know, the administration and council has worked on. And I'm familiar with the 659 property that you reference in here, and that is aesthetically and interior as well, exterior and interior. It's a nice building, and it does add to the aesthetic, from the beltway, you know, what people are able to see. And as Ms. Mealy said, that corner lot, of course, is, it stands out, so this would have, the way you described it, has the potential to add to that, and East Third Street needs that, and that's part of the-
Very much.
Part of the vision going forward. So, yeah, I'm excited about that for those purposes as well.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, and the conditional use is approved. Next item on the agenda, then, is lot consolidation. I'll go ahead and have you describe it, then.
The only thing to add to that, again, like I said, we're taking the three separate parcels, combining them one. It would be a total of 10,146 square foot lot. It was reviewed by both the Lycoming County Planning, as well as the city planning, and gave positive recommendation, and you do have copies of the county's comments.
Thank you. Comments, may I have your motion and a second to approve the lot consolidation?
We'll move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions? The only question, then, I have is, once consolidated, the setbacks and everything, are, those requirements will be met with the structure as he's planning?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further comments or questions, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes. And I should have mentioned this when we approved the conditional use, but just to make sure everyone is clear, we followed the process, but to make sure everyone clear, the conditional use that we approved was at, with the condition of that the project be complete by December 31st, 2018. I usually restate that, and I didn't.
If all happens, when we send in the letter saying it is approved, it will happen immediately.
Right. I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page for process. So, thank you for the explanation. Then, we will return back to the top of the agenda. Item number six is ordinance in final reading, authorizing general obligation bond. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Ordinance authorizing and securing the issuance of one or more series of general obligation bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $23,325,000 pursuant to the Pennsylvania Local Government Unit Debt Act to currently refund all of the city's 2,500,000 general obligation note, series of 2016, and number two, 1 million of the city's 5 million general obligation notes, series of 2017, and advance refund all or a portion of the city's 8,300,000 outstanding general obligation bonds, series of 2013, and $8,290,000 outstanding general obligation bond, series of 2014, and paying the cost of issuing the refunding bonds, accepting a bond purchase agreement, setting forth the parameters, substantial form of and conditions for issuing the bonds, pledging this full faith, credit, and taxing power of this city to secure the bonds, creating a sinking fund, and appointing a paying agent and sinking fund depository, authorizing the redemption of the refunded obligations, and authorizing related action.
That was the short form.
That was the short form.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve that ordinance in final reading?
We'll move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Mr. Nichols, how are you this evening?
Fine, thank you. I thank. Good evening. Before you, as an ordinance on second reading, to implement a refinancing strategy, was refund or advance refund some or all of the city's outstanding general obligation notes to capture today lower interest rates, and which will provide for reductions in our annual debt service payments, again, utilizing the same amortization periods that are in Before you, or attending tonight's meeting, are the key players in this refinancing strategy. We have Greg Bruner from M&amp;T Securities, Rich Kazawa from M&amp;T Bank, and Jens Dumgard from Rhodes and Signon, who is our bond counsel. They are here tonight to provide you with an update on the financing structure and refunding, as well as answer any questions you may have about the ordinance on second reading. Tonight, we did hand out an updated report from M&amp;T Securities to give you sort of where we are today, because interest rates do fluctuate, and we obviously are all very interested in seeing, you know, what the savings will be at the end of this situation. So, right now, you'll see that that shows that savings now around $800,000. So, Greg and the team are looking at this on a day-to-day basis to ensure that we are achieving the best savings possible. At this time, if, I'm sorry, with the chair, I'd like to call Greg Bruner, just to give you an update on the report that he prepared.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, members of city council. Thanks very much for the opportunity. As Bill mentioned, we did circulate an updated set of numbers for your review. Interest rates continually move, and we just wanted to give you the most current version of what the current, the market's looking like today. Interest rates have moved up a little bit since the last time we were here and talking, which has resulted in a slight decrease in savings. As Bill mentioned, we're looking at about $800,000 in cash flow benefit to the city now from going ahead and proceeding with the refunding. Obviously, those rates, you know, that savings number can move between now and the time we actually go to pricing, but we still have the constraint in the ordinance, you must have at least 2.5% of the amount of bonds being refunded as savings in order to proceed with any refunding. So I did want to just give you an update of what's happening in the market, and we're moving quickly towards getting ready to enter the market sometime in the next few weeks, and at that point in time, we'll be able to lock in the savings. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the analysis or the process as we move forward.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Just one quick question about, hang on a moment. I'm just looking at your summary of the different, of RBT, city, and parking authority debt, before and after.
Yes.
There's an, there's an extra column in the RBT and the city, but it's a different extra column. I'm trying to understand exactly what's happening there. So we have the as-is debt, principal showing at 10.38, 10.38 million, interest showing at 4.2, for a total outstanding debt service of 14.6. Then the proposed after 2017, and it's only because I just looked at this for a couple of minutes, maybe I...
Yeah, sure.
Might be that I would have logic it out at some point, but I'm just going to ask because I've got you here right now. Then we've got the after-proposed 2017 bond issue. We've got the 7.7 million, 3.2 million, principal 7, 3.2 of the interest, obviously a dramatic difference between the before picture, and then a 3.2 million of existing debt service. So is this the, help me understand where that's coming from?
Certainly, yeah. As we've talked about before, the 2013s are very attractive opportunities for the city for the refunding. The 2014s is a little more marginal. Right now, there's a couple maturities of 2014s that it's not in your benefit to refund because you're not going to create any savings from them. So as we move forward, we're not going to refund those if they don't provide benefit to the, to the city. So we are leaving a portion of those 2014 bonds outstanding in this current market. We're not changing them at all, and we're wrapping the new debt around it so that you still have a essentially same debt service structure as you would have had under the prior bonds with, you know, in, if anything, lower debt service in those years. But we only want to refund those maturities that provide savings and benefit to the city.
Understood. So that existing...
Can I clarify on, before you go? And that would mean we would, by not refunding it, we are also borrowing fewer dollars as a result?
That is correct. Right now, we're anticipating issuing a little more than $1 million less than what we'd been presenting when we talked to you previously.
Okay, thank you.
Only going to do if it benefits you.
Sure.
Right. Okay, understood. So basically, borrow, borrowing less, refinancing, or refinancing slightly less, and yeah. Okay, and then the new, the line in the, under the RBT debt, term out of temporary borrowing?
Yeah, that's the, the additional 1 million that we're taking from a short-term borrowing out long. So since that's relating just to the RBT, there's no savings comparison on that. It's obviously lower than if you would have used a conventional method to term it out, which is the advantage for you to go ahead and do it, but since there's no fixed debt service on that right now, we just know it's a lower rate than it otherwise would have been.
Okay.
But we're locking that out. But that's not part of the true savings comparison.
Got it.
But it is on the page so that you can see that debt service.
Okay, understood. And then the parking authority is pretty straightforward, although I'm, we'll say they're not going to see much savings.
Yeah.
But...
And the reason for that is simply the debt, the old parking debt was so short that the shorter debt, most of it, you just don't have the opportunity to create as much savings as you do in longer bonds.
Okay, understood. Thank you for the explanation. I was just a little confused about what was going on there, so thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in the final reading, which means the next step will be with the finance committee, correct? Yeah, all right. Thank you very much for your time and effort to save the citizens of Williamsport quite a bit of money, actually, over the coming years. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is another ordinance in final reading connected to the International Maintenance Code. Mrs. Frank, in a short form, please.
An ordinance, Article 1741, International Property Maintenance Code.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second on that in final reading?
Second.
I heard, okay, thank you. I just didn't hear it. Mr. Girardi, welcome back.
Thank you. Really, I don't have anything to add other than just one thing, and I know I get a lot of questions, and I'll just, I said last week, and I'd want to say it again. The International Property Maintenance Code covers all residential and non-residential structures, and it covers all premise, which means it covers everything in the city, whether it's a commercial building, hospital, anything that's existing that's used. We can inspect it through this book to make sure it stays standard. This is just not a rental ordinance. That's what, a lot of people think this is just for rental properties. It is not. Your house is required to have a smoke alarm on every floor, hardwired, or you're required to have a carbon dioxide, you have a gas heat, just like a rental property does. So if we go into your home and inspect it, and we're down in the basement, we don't see a smoke alarm, you're going to be putting smoke alarms in your house, just so you know. A lot of people don't realize that, but that's what we can do with this code.
Okay. Comments or questions? Mr. Nubielo?
Just, so if my neighbor's foundation is crumbling, and it becomes not only a threat to him and his family, but a threat to my property and my family, what does this, how does this factor in?
Basically, it means if it's a residential house and I own it and I live there, you can call the codes department, complain on your neighbor. We'd have to go up to investigate and look at it. If it's a bad foundation, needs to be repaired, they're going to get that same violation notice that a rental property owner would get for that same foundation wall.
Thank you.
That's what it's for. It's for the safety of everybody involved.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in final reading. Next item on the agenda is a resolution setting city council's dates. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution, setting city council meeting dates for the year 2018.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution?
Go move.
Second. Mr. Lubin, how are you?
Mr. President, members of council, this is a standard resolution setting forth the council minute, uh, meeting minutes, meeting dates. The only thing I would note is that because this year is a municipal election, the organizational meeting has to be held the first business day of the new year, which would be January 2nd.
I don't believe this was reviewed by committee because it was circulated amongst members of council, so I'll just open it for comments, questions. Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next items involve the tabled resolutions connected to the stormwater control. There's ongoing work there, so we will likely not be taking those up tonight, but for procedure, I'll ask if there's a motion in a second to remove the resolution to approve a transfer of operations and transition agreement for stormwater control systems from the table. Hearing none, moving on to the next item, is there a motion to remove the resolution to approve equipment lease agreement from the table? Hearing none, is there, moving on to resolution to approve a bill of sale, is there a motion to remove that item from the table? Hearing none, and finally, is there a motion to remove from the table a resolution of the city of Williamsport concurring with the declaration of taking filed by the Williamsport Sanitary Authority and permitting taking of the city's interest in the city's stormwater management system? Hearing none on that either. Each of those remain on the table. Next, am I right here, Randy?
Number 15.
Except for filing, right? Okay. Next item on the agenda, then, is except for filing. We have the Finance Committee meeting minutes of June 6, 2017, Public Safety Committee meeting minutes of June 6 and September 5, 2017, and Public Works meeting minutes of July 5, 2017. Can I have a motion in a second to approve, accept those for filing?
Go move.
Hearing motion, second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are accepted. Next item on the agenda is announcements. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, October 26th at 7:30 here in council chambers. Other upcoming meetings include on Monday, October 16th at noon, the Planning Commission, Tuesday, October 17th at 10:00 a.m., the Bligher Property Commis, Committee, 4:00 p.m., Brandon Park Committee and the Shetree Commission, Commission, I mean, and at 6:30 p.m., Harp. On Thursday, October 19th at 10:30 a.m. is the zoning hearing board, and at 4:00 p.m. is the Board of Health. On Tuesday, October 24th at noon is Public Works, and at 3:30 is the Finance Committee. On Wednesday, October 25th at 11:30 a.m. is Redevelopment Authority. That brings us the end of the agenda. Are there comments by members of council? Hearing none, mayor, you or the, or your administration?
Good evening, Dr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of city council. This week, there was a public safety meeting in regards to an appointment to the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority. This individual came forward, was asked several questions from two of the members, and at this time, I humbly request your concurrence for the appointment of Georgia Stover, city of Williamsport resident, to the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority from October 12, 2017, to January 1st, 2021.
And I received written notice today asking that that agenda item be removed from the agenda, and, and we did so.
Okay, and we're asking to put that back on the agenda, someone could make that motion. The situation was, Mrs. Stover had to take a look at her schedule once again. It's okay with her boss, and she's ready to serve. She's been doing some homework in the last few days, and she's excited to serve. So if council could accommodate this request, we'd appreciate it since she's in the audience.
And there are two, as I understand it, there are two mechanisms in which this could occur. One would be placing it on the agenda under regular order, which would be two weeks from now. The other alternative would be to, if you're changing the agenda in the midst of a meeting, have a motion to suspend the rules. Is that correct, Mr. Lubin? Okay. So I'll give an opportunity for council, if they'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. I hear no such motion, and so I, if you'd like to reappoint her...
So are you saying, because this individual sitting in the audience left her home, had to prepare, because she does have a family, and she's sitting right here, out of respect as a citizen of Williamsport, you're asking her to come back two weeks later when you